Good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session, January 17th, 2023, of the Methacton Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Executive session notice, there was an executive session of the board held virtually on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, for the purpose of consulting with the solicitor regarding a legal matter involving a member of the professional staff. By way of attendance, all board members are present, and recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have three presentations, the Arrowhead Construction, we have Jack from Fidavia, if you make your way to the podium. We also have the annual local audit report, we have Gorman and Associates here this evening, and then lastly, we have the 2324 proposed preliminary budget, where Mr. Booker and I will present that proposed presentation. Fidavia, the Arrowhead Construction updates, the board members should have it in their packets in front of them, or you can view it on the screen behind you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jack Ayers. I represent Fidavia Construction Management, and I'm in the Methacton School District. Apologize. Under site and building exterior, we completed all concrete sidewalk at the final phase, completed the four and eight inch meter installations, completed the exterior basketball court and striping, completed the exterior signs and lighting, completed all trees and shrubs, had completed 95% of seating and mulching. Under building interior, we completed the marker wall and TV mounted cafeteria, continuing punch list items throughout the building, completed existing mosaic and canvas mural reinstallations from the old school, completed the aluminum cove base throughout the main office and corridors. Under mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, we completed the theater lighting in the gym, continuing the MEP punch list also, continue balancing and building HVAC system, completed the audio video rack and sound systems, sounds great, complete the required owner trainings, I think we have like one left for the lighting, that's about it, and complete startup of the water softener up, which was done today, this morning. Upcoming work, and I apologize, under there, that should say completed bleachers, woodwork, volleyball sleeves, motorized shades, and wall pads at the gym, the gym's done. We will continue the remaining site work in Phase Four, complete the outdoor learning space, and complete the split rail fencing at basins. And you can see the current budgets as they are now, we're still at current change order amount of about 3.7%, which is fairly good for this size job. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Any questions for members of the board to my right? Seeing none, to my left, Ms. Cancro?
Just clarification, so the gym is working, and have we, are we utilizing it now for the kids in the school building and community use?
Mr. Booker, I think we had a conversation about that. Did we open it up for like Mara or groups that commonly rent our gyms?
Facilities within the process of that and getting on the school dude, as well as the pricing, so we should be all set to go.
Thank you. Any other questions, members of the board to my left? Mr. Ayers, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do for our district, we appreciate it. The next on the agenda, we have the annual local audit report. Mr. Booker, I don't know if you want to introduce our two guests here this evening?
So tonight, you'll have Hank Miller, who's presenting, and Bo is partners also here. There with Gorman Associates is background, our prior auditor had resigned from their contract, and Gorman Associates filled us in. Typically, we are presenting this in November from when we were at Malley, so we're a little delayed getting through this, but overall, I appreciate Gorman Associates for coming in and putting us on their schedule and fitting us in.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Hank Miller. I was the engagement partner for Gorman Associates for the Methacton Audit, and I just want to give you a quick review of our single audit report. So, and everyone should have a copy in front of them, should appear as you do. So first, I would just like to point you to the independent auditors' report found on page three. So in here, we explain exactly what it is that we audited, and what we are therefore giving an opinion on. You will find our opinion in paragraph two, and basically, we just state, in our opinion, the financial statements that are presented in this report are presented fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the activities of the school district, and for the year then ended, June 30, 2022. So basically, this means that the district did receive a clean or unmodified opinion. We did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that were noted in a report. We also go on to explain our responsibilities for the audit as the auditors and management's responsibilities for the financial statements. So next, I want to point you to page six. This section is MDMA, the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So I just want to note here that this, we do not audit this section, however, we are required to review it. Well, first, let me take a step back. This is written by management, and in their words, explaining the, given an analysis of the financial position and the operations for the year. We do not audit that, this section, but we do review it to make sure that there's nothing that would be misleading, or what we might determine as a misstatement. Then, the next section is going to be the basic financial statements, which start on page 16. And really, this, the statements that I would want to point you to here would probably be, starting on page 18, you have the balance sheet for the governmental funds, and then we also have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances found on page 20. So those two statements are presented on what we call modified accrual basis, which is more in line with budgetary accounting, which is more in line with, with how schools approach their financial operations. And I do just want to note in here that the general fund finished the year with a deficit of $493,541, and this created a ending fund balance for June 30th, 2022, of $16,296,908. The next section I want to take you to starts on page 28. So here, we have your notes to the basic financial statements. These are required by accounting standards. The notes give a general description of the district operations and governance, and they will also go into more detail, certain line items that you'll find within the financial statements. So this section tries to give you more insight beyond just the numbers. And then next, starting on page 82, we have the required supplemental section. And these are just additional schedules that are required for your pension and OPEB. And after those schedules, we also, there are notes that correspond with those schedules as well. And then we have on page 90, we start the supplemental information section. So this, this section, these schedules or statements that you'll find in this section are not required, but this is just additional information that we think you may find useful, and we like to include it in the reports. And then finally, we have our single audit section, which starts on page 104. So the schedule you'll see here, this is called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. This is basically just a detailed listing of all the federal programs that had expenditures during the year, and from this schedule, if you expend more than $750,000 during the year in federal awards, you're required to have a single audit, which is a compliance audit. So after this schedule, we have our notes to the CIFA, and then we have two reports. We have our independent auditors' report on government auditing standards, and then we have the independent auditors' report on compliance for each major program under the uniform guidance. So this report that I just referred to is on page 110. Basically, we give our opinion on what the results were from the single audit. This year, we were required to look at IDA, or special education, and we didn't have any findings from that audit, and our, our opinion states as such there, that there were no issues with non-compliance. And then the very last, page 113, we just have, this is called the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. This basically just gives a quick rundown on our opinion, the opinions that were issued, if there were any findings, they would be noted in here, which there weren't, so.
Thank you. Before we take any questions from members of the board, I would just want everybody to know that once the board approves this at the January 24th meeting, this, this electronic version of this audit will then be posted to the district website for a public access. At this point in time, are there any questions about the audit from members of the board to my left? Not seeing any questions. How about from my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, first, I want to thank you, and thank you, Tim, and Danielle, and the team I know from previous lives, and when the auditors switched, that was not your favorite time of year, so for both sides, actually. So I'm very pleased that it went well, and hopefully it will the next three years with you. We did ask this question after you left from the finance committee, but I don't think I still understand the, when you have the supplemental, non-required information, starting on page 91, 92, really. When we look at the different, the variances between the budget and actual on the revenue side, there's true variances on page 91. But on page 92, when you get into the expenditure, there's many that remarkably, the budget equals, the actual expense equals the budget. Can you explain the philosophy behind that, and not being able to see the variations in this particular report?
So, okay, can you just rephrase the question for me?
Yeah.
Or just say it again?
Sorry. So primarily on page 92.
Yeah.
And page 91, the variance between actuals and the budget are clearly there, and we clearly can see, for example, that current real estate taxes was favorable by three, $674,000. But when we look on page 92, when we start looking at the expenditures, many of the items have been, I imagine, budgetary transferred around, or something.
Correct, yes. So within the budget law, you're not, there's certain rules, you're not allowed to overexpend your budget. So at certain points in time, you have to do budgetary transfers, especially if you think you're going to be overspend your budget for any particular reason. So now, there are exceptions to this. So normally, what will happen is, when we go through the audit, if, you know, by function, there is, there is a, your actual expenditures were over budget, then you would, we just do budget transfers to bring them in line. So that's why you'll see many of these will have a zero dollar variance. Now, if there are negative variances, there's going to be exceptions for that. So, but if in total, you over expended your budget, then that, that would create an issue that, with the budget. But in total, there, there weren't any issues as far as overexpending your budget.
So if I can summarize what you, what you're telling me is, on autistic support and learning support, we're allowed to show a variation, but the other accounts associated with instruction were not allowed to show a variation on the, on the final report?
I don't think it's so much an issue with this. So this is a more detailed breakdown, right, by, by each specific function, but as Bo was saying, it's by major function, which is what you will see in the last statement of the basic financial statements.
Right, so on page, so on page 27, this is the basic required statement. The one that's in the back is more a detailed breakdown, but for budgetary law and transfers, I, I think we're missing your question, we don't really quite understand.
Sorry. I can take it back up through Tim. Tim, you want to maybe, the point, my point is, there's no way that we had a budget for early intervening, intervening services of $234,902 on page 92.
That's because budgetary transfers were done to bring that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why that was done, and not be able to see the variation in early intervening services.
Well, I mean, that's a good point. Maybe, maybe in the future, when we make these financial statements you would like to see at the beginning, the, the actual budget column, not the final budget, but the prelim budget numbers.
Yeah.
So if that's what you would like in your financial statements in your report, we could definitely do that, because these aren't required statements the way that this is presented here. So we could do prelim, so if you wanted to see prelim versus actual, and then the variances.
Yeah, and, and Tim said he will do that work for us, but it just, for, for the public to see this, and to be able to understand where our differences are, it's so, you can't see them, so.
Well, that's because this is, the budget on here is the final budget numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions to, for members to my right? Seeing no other questions. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the 2023-24 Proposed Preliminary Budget. As Mr. Booker prepares to go to the podium, I'm just going to start. This evening, Mr. Booker and I will present the 2324 Proposed Preliminary Budget. This presentation will show the proposed preliminary budget at an Act One index of 4.1%, which equates to about an $8 million increase from the current year. This increase is driven by staff salaries and benefits that account for about $7 million of the $8 million, with the remaining coming from operations. I will make a recommendation that the board, at their January 24, 2023 voting meeting, approve the resolution not to exceed the Act One index. If approved, my administration, I will work with the finance committee of the board to refine the budget and closely monitor any changes in projected revenue and expenses with the proposed final budget to be adopted in May, and the final in June of 2023. This presentation includes all the building and departmental requests, and the changes made administratively to bring the budget into Act One limit for this proposed preliminary budget. Over the next several months, matters of assessments, staffing, healthcare, will have the greatest impact on where we land in June. I present the 2324 Proposed Preliminary Budget, which contains all the elements necessary for us to provide an exceptional Methacton School District experience. Mr. Booker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening. So the first thing we want to go over with the budget is the budget timeline. We've already met with the finance committee on January 11th. We're here tonight on the 17th. As Dr. Zerbi noted, on the 24th, we have to make a decision. We can either approve the Resolution 23-01 not to exceed the Act One index, or we could take exceptions if they're available to us, or referendum to exceed that, at which time we'd have to approve the preliminary budget. On the 15th, then, we would adopt the preliminary budget, and then, as Dr. Zerbi noted, on May 15th, we would go with the proposed final budget, and then on June 20th, we go on the final budget. So what exceptions are available to us? Typically, there's only two exceptions that are available to Methacton School District, the first one being piers, we did not qualify for any. The second one being the special education. It's important to point out that we qualify for $1,459,221 as an exception to the Act One index. The next piece that we have for you is the calculation, so you can see how we get there, which is the Act One, and at the bottom, it'll say does not qualify. And then on the next page, you'll have the special education, which gets you to the $1.4 million, or some of those $1.5 million. So that would be in addition to the money that we are able to go to at the 4.1% of the Act One index. So where does that put us? Taking all the factors in, as Dr. Zerbi said, everything that we were given and provided by the staff and everything, taking the Act One index exception for special education, that would give us a millage increase of 5.75%. Okay, that would give us $128.3 million. All the budget information, everything we compiled from all the requests for the budget totaled $128.7 million. We still, even taking the special ed exception, have a $400,000 shortfall. The finance committee gave us direction in November 20, November 19th, on 2022, to use the Act One index without exception, and use zero budgeting methodology. Because of that, we now have to get the budget down to 4.1% and not take the special education exception. So to do this, what we did is we obviously had to remove the special ed exception. We moved $150,000 of admin projects that are typically in the budget over to the capital project fund. We moved $250,000 of age 22 costs to the ESRS III grant, that's for learning loss. We moved $110,000 of technology improvements to the capital project fund. We reduced our technology software cost by $78,000. We reduced the high school budget by $83,000. We removed the proposed evening supervisor and floating custodian at a cost of about $265,000, including all their benefits. We also reduced the existing historical unfilled PCA staff by seven positions, which saved us about $457,000. And we reduced our staffing costs due to retirees of $280,000. So where has this put us? This puts us at a 4.1% millage increase, a budget of $126.8, total expenditures $126.8, and there is no shortfall. This is an $8 million increase in both revenue and expenditures from the prior year's budget. Our top five sources of revenue are real estate taxes, retirement earned income, the basic education subsidy, the special education subsidy, and all of the revenues total only 12%. Local revenue will be $100 million, state revenue $26.2 million, and our federal revenue is $382,000. The next slide, what we have for you is, we're going to be expanding on the historical budget trends, so you can see where the budget trends are coming from. So you can see, a local revenue starts at around 86.8 in the 2019-2020 year, and increases to 20, in the 2023-2024 year, to $100.2 million. You see, state revenue goes from $24.1 million to $26.2. Federal revenue goes from $677,000 down to $382,000. Other revenue is revenue that we don't account for, don't expect, or don't anticipate, so we don't really have any budgeted revenue for other revenue, typically our insurance claims, or some kind of outside revenue. So what does this mean for our local revenue? Local real estate is $84.2 million, millage increase of 4.1, which is the Act One index. We have the collection rate of 96.97%, and we use the assessed values in December 2022. EIT projection from Berkhammer on the high end is $8.75 million. Interest income is estimated to be $1.94 million. Real estate transfers are up Real estate transfers are up $1.84 million, and delinquent real estate taxes are projected to be $1.1 million, with interim real estate taxes budgeted at about $800,000. So those are the top ones coming in, and then all other revenue that I did not mention totals $1.9 million and accounts for only 1.92% of our budget. So we look at the historical revenue. You can see now the breakdown that we provided and added into our presentation, where you have the real estate taxes going from about 74 million up to the 84 million over the five-year. You can see the trend of the earned income tax that we have, the real estate transfer tax, the delinquent real estate taxes, and interim, and then the interest income. And you'll note that the 2022-2023 is a budget, the prior years are actuals, and the 2023-24 are our proposed preliminary budget. So the important part is how do we get to the real estate calculation? We have assessed values of about $2.7 billion. We have a 4.1% increase to the 31.6522 millage rate, which gives us 32.9499. That gives us a gross tax levy of $89.4 million. We take that all down, you reduce it by the gaming funds. That gives us a net tax levy of $86,885,000 roughly. We apply our collection rate, which is calculated from the last three. On the right-hand side of this year's slide, you'll see that the last three tax collection rates, which include Shenondale, they've already been adjusted for the Shenondale. So that's already been factored in based on last year's decision. And that gives us a net tax of $84.3 million. What does this mean to the homeowners? And that's the important part associated with. Our average assessed value currently is $174,400, which means that the, over the year, the average assessed valued home in Mathacton School District would increase their real estate taxes by $226.32. The chart below gives you a breakdown based on the different values that we have out there. And if someone wanted to find their value, they could go on Montgomery County's website and pull that up. And we use a common level ratio of 2.53. When we look at the expenditures that are in the budget, we have $88.4 million associated with salary and benefits, $26 million associated operational, and debt and transfer of $12.4 So based on the, again, with the finance committee, we added trends, so that we can see the trends associated with this. You can see the salaries going from $45.5 million up to $52.5 million, benefits from 29 to 35, almost $36 million. Operationally, ranging from $22.4 to $26 million, and debt and transfers from $11.6 million up to $12.4 million. So this is what we have for staffing on the next slide. So last year, the board approved the total staff of 626.34 FTE. Changes throughout the year that the board approved were 2.43 FTE in the various areas noted on the chart. And this year, you'll note, as I mentioned before, we're reducing this by seven FTE associated with the PCA's, again, unfilled positions, which will lower our staffing down to 621.77 Some of the changes in the proposed preliminary budget associated with salaries, there is an increase of $4 million in the salaries from the 22-23 budget. Increases are based on contractual obligation with MEA, MSBA, Teamsters, and Confidentials. This year, we only have three retirees, so it does factor into three retirees, and we've increased this typically, it's Bachelors plus 15 Step Three. Given the changes in the MEA contract, we do replace, we are replacing them in a Master Step Five, because we have the ability to go step for step up to this 10th step. We fill in talking with HR, this is probably more along the lines of where we'll end up with some of the replacements that we get on average. Not every single one, but on average. The salary expenditures, again, we broke this down based on the feedback from the finance committee from MEA. You can see going from $32.6 million to $37.3 million, MSBA from 4.1 to 5.2 almost, and so forth. Overall, the salaries are increasing from the 22-23 to 23-24 by about 8.2%. Some of the benefits that are impacting the budget, obviously Peasars, but this year, we were thankful that Peasars actually went down from 35.24% to 34%, which gave us a savings of $755,000 on the budgeted salaries, meaning that our Peasars cost, if it stayed flat at 35.26, would have had another $755,000 in our budget. So that's a big win for us. This represents the full amount, 50%, which is also offset in our real, in our revenue. Medical and prescription are one of the areas that are really hurting us with regards to it. The first of three looks. The rate increases between 14 to 15.27% for medical, and RX costs are zero. However, there is an increase in the prescription based on choices people make, decisions that they have, and the overall mixture of single family and the choices they make in their prescription plans. Social Security is 7.65%, and we have no increases in dental vision and life insurance. The benefits are then, on the next slide, again, historical, I'm not going to go through every single one. Peasars being our big one, going from $15.5 million to $17.7 million. And you can see our medical is climbing from $7.5 million to $10.8. And then, you have the prescription going from $1, almost $2 million up to $2.4. There's some of the three bigger areas, specifically the medical and the prescription leading the way. A dental vision and insurance, it seems like a lot percentage-wise, but overall, dollar-wise, it's not a lot. Continuing with the operating budget, we have the operating expenses that increased by about $1 million. Building budgets decreased by $80.60. We are removing all the K-12 MacBooks, consumables, and materials from the K-8 buildings and to the CIA Department or Curriculum Instruction and Assessments Department budget. Changes account for about $60,000 of the building budget reduction. Departmental budgets, athletics increased by about $42,000. Business office went down about 209, specifically related to the legal cost. Curriculum Instruction and Assessments went up $181,000. That's including the acquisition of new textbooks and consumables. And communications increased $15,000 for a communications consultant, which is part of the strategic plan. Continuing with the department budgets, facilities increased by about $65,000 as we increased utility cost and material cost. Pupil services is up $938.60. This is our largest growing area, and it's been growing for a while, which is why we have the special ed exception available to us. So professional services for emotional support and autistic support are up $400,000. Charter schools up $342,000. And outplacement tuition is up $175,000. Technology had a net increase of $81,000 roughly. This is new software added, increasing software costs for 60, about $67,000. Transportation increased on net by $31.9000. This includes the proposed extension for the first student contract, which was noted in a memo as well as presented to the property, and will be a better presentation on, regards to the financial implications in February to the finance committee. Again, we break this out. You'll see your contracted, the contracted carriers are our number one thing, then other professional servicers, tuitions to charter schools. They're the top three areas. Top four, if you go into tuition to tech schools, is North Monco. And you can see how the different areas of our operational budget can break down. Again, this is a chart that breaks out everything over that same time period and gives you the changes on the percentage. Overall, you're looking at about $22.5 million to $26 million. Debt and transfers, debt and transfers decreased by $172.4000. Bonds went down $85,000. Lease payments went down $43.8000. We included the capital, the, the transfer to capital remained flat. Claims and judgments were reduced by $80,000. Miscellaneous expenses did increase by $88.3000. Budgetary reserves remain constant, while exam fees increased by $13.6000, and dues and fees increased by $8.8000. One of the things the finance committee asked for is us to break this out a little bit more in detail, because we always, when we talk about this, which is reason is there, the amount, is our bonds and our leases predominantly drive these areas, but they wanted to see the other areas included in this, so we break this out a little further. Again, we'll get the historical values of that, and you can see how the historical areas are going. You can see from the principal interest, the leases, and all that. I will say that I did adjust the leases from the operational budgets based on the changes that were in the audit. So the actuals that you're seeing with regards to the leases were taken out of the operational previously and put in a debt and transfer where the new orders have us placing that expense, because I wanted to give you an apples-to-apples comparison there. Our top 10 expenditures, $37.2 million associated with professional salaries, Peasars $17.4 million, medical 10.8, bond principal payment 7.2, contracted carrier 7.1, administration salaries 4.6, social security $4 million, other professional services $3.9 million, interest on our bonds $3 million, and instructional assistance salaries at $2.8 million. All other costs amount to 22.41% of our budget, or $28.4 million. We did include the major object summary for everyone. This is something that we had presented in the past, and we wanted to give everyone a reference to look back, because this was one of the driving slides that we used in previous ones. We feel that the slides that we presented tonight are a little bit more descriptive in the areas and provide more detail. Trying to give a little bit more transparency into where the numbers come from as we're in-depth comparisons on the trends. When we look at our five-year projection assumption, we have a growth rate based on the 1130-22 values, annual growth rate of 0.56% on assessed values, earned income tax growth rate of 2%, collection rate 96.97%. The growth on the transfers, 0.2. There is no growth on investments. There's a half a percent growth on real, interim real estate taxes, and all other revenues are zero. For the five-year projection assumptions on expenditures, the increase for staff is based on contractual labor agreements, medical at 5%, prescription at 2%, vision and dental 1%. And then, we have the Peasars projections, which we just went up a quarter from each, because right now, there was no other projections out there since Peasars just came out. So that's where we came, added a quarter percent each year, optimistically, keeping it low. There's no changes in general supplies from year to year. Special education costs are increasing at 5% and transportation at 8% in 24-25, and then 4.5% each year thereafter. Where that gives us currently, the 126.8 million budget, the revenue with no property tax increases will go to 137.2, 131, 133.2, and then 135.4. Overall, you can see that we're going to be losing money as we go through this. You'll have a little bit more money as it comes in for the projected 25-24, and then it will run off to a loss of about $4.5 million. When we go with the Act One index and increasing, you'll have the 2.45% tax increase for 25, 26, 27, and 28. That gives us 26.8, all the way up to the $137.6 million. Expenses are still running at the 126.8, all the way up to 147.8. Here, what you'll have is you'll still, will not run out of our fund balance or until, actually, we won't run out of it by the end of this time period. We'll still have about $800,000 loss, less, I'm sorry, about $800,000 less. However, you do notice that it is decreasing, and we are losing money as we go through this So overall, the five-year projection, you can see where the funds are coming from. We have it broken out by the big areas with staffing costs. Salaries gone from 52.5 up to 61.6, retirement from 21.7 all the way up to 26.1, medical from 10.8 to 13.2, prescription from 2.4 to 2.6, and other benefits going from about $984,000 up to about $1 million. These are also based on the slide 30, five-year projection assumptions. So we did a sensitivity analysis, and the main thing from here, because we're already at the 4.1%, and we'd have to go down. In order to go down a half a percent, the change in millage, we'd have to reduce $416,506 of revenue in order to reduce a half a point, which means if we did take that out, we'd go from 4.1% to 3.6%. Typically, we'd have the PDE 2028 here. If the board adopts the resolution not to exceed the Act One, there is no PDE 2028. If the board does not adopt that resolution, then we will go with the preliminary budget and have a PDE 2028 associated with it. However, it's important to note that the final budget always does have the PDE 2028 associated with it. We also included the building request projects. Now, as noted previously, this is the $150,000 that we moved to Capital Projects Fund. This is a list of building area requests that were done by the principals and/or administrators associated with these areas. We will cap this at $150,000 as we do every year, but this is a list of everything that was requested by them. The next piece, and this is where we'll be looking for the future, is to try and figure out where we will be going. So in January, in February, you'll have the January end-of-month assessments. We'll make any millage changes accordingly. Staffing changes will be incorporated in North Monco Technical Career Centers actuals. February end-of-month assessments and March millage, staffing, second look in medical, which will be a big one for us, and workers' comp should come in. April will have the March end-of-month assessments, millage if changes necessary, staffing changes, and the most important, the third look, because that'll really set up where we're going to be with the medical and prescription, because that's one of the driving forces that we have left to change our budget. We'll also get an EIT update from Burkeheimer to give a ride us a better, closer analysis of what we can expect for next year. In May, we have the April end-of-month assessments, millage, staffing, property insurance comes in, and we'll actually get our tech leases, so they'll be adjusted. And then, finally, in June, we only have left, in theory, is the May end-of-month assessments, staffing changes, and the millage that would be associated with that. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. And before we take questions from members of the board, just a reminder that this is a work session, so we're not asking you to make any decisions here this evening. The recommendation, based on your feedback this evening, will, will be that on the January 24th meeting is that you approve the resolution to not exceed the Act One index. That doesn't mean that you're approving the budget. It means that you're approving us not, that, that the budget for, that, that will be up for approval in June would not exceed the Act One index. And then, like I said earlier this evening, that we would work with the finance committee and our administration to refine the budget and to present to you the, the proposed final budget in May and then the final in June. So questions to, from members of the board to my right? Ms. Rocco?
Yeah, and, Mr. Booker, I apologize if you said this. I just don't want members of the public to be concerned, but that roughly $456,990 for the PCA staff, I know it said it at the bottom of the slide, but it's not that we're eliminating those positions. They are just generally outsourced, and we don't fill them. Right? If you could just speak to that, so people don't think we're just cutting them.
So they're unfilled positions that are filled by outsourced individuals based on the certifications that they are required to have. So these positions are going unfilled, and as such, we can remove them for the budget without impacting any individuals or any students.
Thank you. And then, just one more. With the first look with benefits, so I did see, I think that was page 17 that I was looking, I saw that the jump, I think this was it, yeah, so, or the trends I was looking at. So the jump from 22, from this school year to next, going from 32.828, you know, to 35.955, when you go back previous years, the jump has been, you know, a million, maybe two. So this is just first look, because if you look at that number, it is higher, you know, than, than the previous increases that are listed here, or the trends, I should say. So can you just speak a little bit to that? I know you just did at the end of the presentation, and when we'll have kind of second look, but just, maybe just speak a little bit more to, to the benefits, if you can.
Sure. So you're talking about the medical and the prescription, which are set by the Bucks County, Montgomery County Healthcare Consortium. So there's three looks. First look, second look, third look. Second look will come out in February, March, and then April, March, April will be the third look, really depends on the timing that the actuaries can complete it. The first look is about a 16% increase in medical, and that's predominantly because last year, if you recall, we took a reduction in our healthcare costs, and now we're going to go back up to where we are based on current experiences. The trend has been, the first look is the highest, and then it moves down from there, typically. That hasn't always occurred, but as the typical trend. The actuaries are working to try and tighten that up, so hopefully, they didn't tighten that up too much this year, and we get a reduction. But that, that is where it comes from, is the actuaries setting out based on our experience, our plan usage, where we need to be to be able to maintain our balances.
Anything else, Ms. Rocco?
No.
Anyone else to write? Mr. Winters?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tim, there's one slide that is going to get people heart attack. I think there's a mistake if you can go back and look at the five-year projection on page 31.
I saw it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to my right? No? To my left, Ms. Graff?
Yes, can you just bring up slide 22 for a second? I just wanted to follow up on the other comment about the benefits. You made a comment that the benefits last year, when the cost of benefits went down?
Correct.
But on the chart, it doesn't appear that the benefits...
So it's...
So can you just explain that?
So the cost of benefits going down is more of a individual or plan cost. However, the number of individuals utilizing that plan can change that. So if I have one person and the cost is $200, that would be my basis. If it goes down the cost per plan to $100, now I got five people on it, it's still going to be $500, and that's where that increase is going to come from. So the changes, the life events that occur through the year, those are all the ones that will determine what our cost is based on a new one. So we're going to take employee X who has family, open choice one, and that's $26,000 here, let's say, and next year it's only 20, it went down to $25,000. Well, the more people that are in that could drive that up. So if someone moves from single or employee's child and has a family, that's going to drive those costs up. So while the cost may go up, the cost for the plan went down last year.
Thank you.
Ms. Cancril?
One comment is I really like the historical budget trends. I really, really like it. I feel like I can understand the area, so I really appreciate you breaking it out and then putting it as a comprehensive. So I definitely appreciate that. The one thing I do think should be a historical trend is special education, only because I see year after year it goes up a million, a million, a million. So I like the five-year, unless it's in there somewhere and I'm missing it. But I do like a five-year special ed trend, I'm just saying, because we're taking away the exemption, and we've, I think three years ago we qualified for it and we didn't take it then either, but our trend has been going up. And so I just think it's, we're really taking in that cost, and when we're covering special ed, we're really looking at things to make sure we're addressing the higher needs now. So I just like that one. And I just want a question about the general fund. Why is it that at the, when we go through a five-year trend, it goes from 17, 17 to all of a sudden like 22?
That's a mistake that Mr. Winters...
Oh, we'll see. Sorry, sorry. See, we're thinking on the same page. And then what is the general consensus of what is a healthy budget to make sure we have in that general fund?
So depends on who you talk to, but I predominantly would go Moody's. Moody likes to set about the 7%. They feel our, the last time we did it, but it'll be changing, they thought our capital project fund was lower, but now we've bolstered that. So that will help us with the Moody's. But really, the unassigned funds, they like to see 7% to 8%.
Yeah. Thank you. I really, I really, really like the historical budget trends. Thank you.
I'll look to look for special education somewhere.
Thank you, Ms. Cancril. Any other questions from members of the board to my left? Seeing none, Mr. Booker, thank you very much. And now we will, for the voting meeting, we'll also have awards of excellence, fall sports recognition, student performance data, and an update on the volunteer policy. With that, we'll also then go into reports for members of the boards and the respective committees, and for the foundation, et cetera. As you can see under the superintendent's report, there's a number of advisements. I think if it's okay with the board, I'd like to just advise them on one other matter here this evening. I called a meeting of the high school neighbors on Anvil Drive for January 12th, 2023, to share with them some information and to hear their concerns with parking on Anvil Drive. And that specifically is student parking on Anvil Drive. We had about 20 residents attend, along with Ms. Cancril, Vice President of the School Board, Mr. Lou Betts, Vice Chairman of the Worcester Township Supervisor, and Sean Halbom of the Worcester Township Manager. The meeting lasted about two hours. The Anvil residents shared that they had three major concerns, parking along Germantown and Anvil Drive, second, the Mathacton school buses sitting idle on Anvil Drive, and the third, cars speeding through Anvil due to the lack of, or I'm sorry, due to the backup of traffic on Mill resulting from our student drop-off and pickup. I shared the following, that the high school has made a number of announcements over the intercom, spoke with students, and included reasonable requests in our high school newsletter on several occasions with respects to student parking on Anvil, based on the feedback we received from residents. We invested approximately $50,000 to add additional 42 student parking spots on the high school campus. We shared that we've been discussing alternative options to having the buses and terminal, and the busing terminal on the high school campus. We need a central location that can have water, sewer, electricity, fenced-in area for parking and securing the buses, as well as a paved parking area for the drivers. We've also shared with them that we're conducting a high school facilities assessment, knowing that major renovations will be needed at the high school, and if and where appropriate, those renovations could include the shrinking of the high school plant footprint with potential gain of additional parking. This issue is, the issue is really summarized as follows, that each high school class has about 350 students or about 700 students, both the high school senior and junior class combined, giving the theoretical potential for students to drive. There are approximately 294 parking spots on the campus. So you can already tell between 700 and 294, there's a deficit. In fact, the 294 doesn't even represent a full class, either senior or junior class. There is limited staff and visitor parking, and bus drivers are parked on our campus only part of the morning and part of the afternoon, taking up about 75 spots. The bus terminal, if completely removed, and again, this is all theoretical, but these are discussions that we've had, and we're just sharing this information with you, that we could make room for about 300 additional spots, not including those 75 that I just mentioned from the drivers. If the bus terminal stayed, and again, that bus terminal houses the administrative staff for transportation, it houses the garage where, and supplies for doing repairs for buses on a regular basis. So that building, if it stayed on the campus, and with all the buses and drivers moved off the campus, we could free up about 225 spots, where the 75 were the drivers, and about another 150 for the moving the fencing back towards the building a little bit further. Again, the safest option, and I share this with the residents, the safest option is for all student drivers to be able to park on campus. That is the safest option for students and certainly allows the district to monitor and to support them, whether it's on a regular daily transportation to and from the school, but also support them if in fact there are challenges with their vehicles, or snow, or the weather-related matters. In addition to that, it would also be the safest option if the elimination of the bus traffic, with the exception of the usual student arrival and departure and events that would occur. So as a result of this, our campus challenges, certainly the following locations have been significantly impacted, Germantown Pike at the intersection of Anvil, as well as Anvil Drive, and Crevel Mill and Chadwick Circle over the years. So with that said, I just want the board to know that I'll continue to communicate with the neighbors and to provide any additional feedback to the board as we make progress. With that said, move on to one other, no, we move on to the, we would go into public comment.
Yeah, Dr. Zirk.
Minutes? I'm sorry?
One question, I think, at least my thought on, when we were trying to do with the reports was to have some discussion if there was any questions related to these reports at this point in time, when the reports have been distributed earlier, or is that not the goal?
We certainly can do that.
Okay. I just have, I have one question related to the policy. There was 628, the capital reserve hold policy pending further input from the Finance Committee. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, there's a limit that's established in policy, 628, that needs to be established by either Finance or Property Committee, that one of those committees has to establish the limit before we finish the, I believe it's going to be re-titled Capital Projects, actually, for 628 as well.
So just some other background information, we can't proceed on that until we receive all the facilities assessment feedback, because part of that information that we would receive from them would help us, or help guide us in the amount of dollars we would likely need to invest over a period of time, which in theory, the policy would then support the inclusion of that amount in the annual budget to ensure that the Capital Projects Fund would have the proper funding to, in perpetuity, to help support those matters. So until we get that report, we can't do the policy, we can't complete it.
Any other questions from members of the board on matters of, from the committee? Ms. Cancril?
I just, I don't know if this is a matter of just saying, I would want to make sure that we're, when we look at the calendar, that we can look to address before we vote on it, a tentative graduation date for next year.
Yes, so you'll notice when Dr. Walsh comes to the podium here today, he'll be sharing with you that not only do we have, a calendar has a number of good features in it, but it also includes the recommendation for a graduation date. And that's new for Mathacton. As you recall, we normally would announce graduation in March of each year. Just in this particular motion here this month, we're looking to have you approve the graduation here in January rather than waiting to March. Any other comments or questions on matters of the committee? Seeing none, we would then move on to the fiscal items. Mr. Booker?
Thank you. This month for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasuries report, budgetary transfers, we have the annual IRS mileage increase. This is to increase the rate to 65.5 cents, which is a 3% increase from the prior increase, which actually occurred July 1st, 2022. There's also two construction change orders, M-04 for Arrowhead, $10,941.08 for the additional labor required to re-flush the hot and cold water loops, due to the water being shut off by the water company, and then M-05, an amount of $1,258.10 to modify the dust working room EF-18, which was required by the health inspector. We also have, as mentioned before, the 2023, 2024 proposed preliminary budget to approve the Act One Resolution 23-01, which is not to exceed the Act One index. And then finally, this month, we have the approval of the financial statements in single audit as presented by Gorman and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any questions from board members to my left? Ms. Perdue?
I just have one in reference to 9E, number one with the water. I guess, so my question, I think I asked this before, because we seem to be running into issues with the water company. Have we had any, do we have any updates? Just because this is not the first change order we are seeing that is due to, and I don't know, was this a miscommunication with the water company, or what was the situation behind it?
This is actually an older issue, but in order to complete the flushing of the pipes, we needed to have this particular work done. So this is not a new, even though it's showing up on your approval list, it was something that occurred, you know, a while back. Nonetheless, I can tell you that we're still working with Fidavia to organize the information so that we can give the board a complete review of the matters associated with this Arrowhead construction project and those with the Auburn Water Company.
You know when that is expected?
It was expected to be on my lap this month. Other questions from members of the board on any financial matters? Ms. Drummond?
Just to clarify that water one, so this we did see before on a previous agenda, as I remember.
We did not see it before on the agenda, but it's not a recent issue that came up. It was something we had to take care of in the interim.
Okay, I thought we had seen it before, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't twice. Okay.
Doctors, if I may, I, to Samira, I asked a couple of questions about that. That was, that number seemed very high for me for labor. That was several trips back and forth to get that completed, so it wasn't a one that jumped out at me, too. So every time they came, they dinged us with a trip charge and things like that. So several trips, several people had to do it, and that's why the labor cost is expensive.
Any other questions from members to my left? To my right? Seeing none, we'll move on to items of personnel. Dr. Sergini?
Good evening and thank you. For your consideration this month, we have the following personnel items. Five resignations professional, including three resignations for retirement at the conclusion of the school year, all at Mathacton High School. We recognize Beth Hall, art instructor, Stephen Rice, English instructor, and Cindy Hartson, school counselor, for their many decades of dedicated service to the students of Mathacton School District, and we wish them all very well in their retirement. We have two resignations classified, both are retirement, including Robert McBride, paraprofessional at the high school, and Kimberly Shade, custodian at Worcester Elementary. We thank Bob and Kim for their many years of dedicated service to Mathacton, and we wish them well in their retirements as well. We have one job description, monitoring assistant, as presented and attached. One additional position, professional, a reading specialist position at Arcola to take effect during the 2022, 2023 school year. One employment professional, Megan Brogan, special education instructor at the high school. We welcome Megan to Mathacton, and we look forward to the good work that she will do with our students. We have three employments classified, Erin Pollarin and Danielle Venetia, monitoring assistants at Skyview and Arcola respectively, and Kevin Burke, paraprofessional at Eagleville. We welcome Erin, Daniel, and Kevin to Mathacton, and we look forward to the good work that they will do with our students. We have one change of status administrative, Timothy Barbagallo, to serve in the position of administrator in charge of the facilities department. One change of status professional, John Conrad, to serve in the position of Dean of Students at Skyview. Three changes of status classified, including Rosalyn Marcajano to the position of part-time office assistant at Arrowhead, Kathleen Bradley to the position of monitoring assistant at the high school, and Derek Donardo to the position of assistant to the administrator in charge of the facilities department. We have one uncompensated leave classified, Christina Haas, from December 15th through the remainder of the first semester, and supplemental contracts, including additional winter coaches, spring coaches, activity sponsors, curriculum writing, the math virtual help desk, mentors, a room movement, kindergarten overview presenters, and pupil services department supplemental contracts as attached. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Questions from members of the board to my left? Seeing no questions, questions from the right? Mr. McGuinness?
Dr. Sergini, my usual question.
Yes, sir.
About the vacant coaching. Do we have leads on them, or are we scratching our head? Do we need help?
We have two vacant positions still with the winter positions. We had two people actually lined up, and for various reasons, they withdrew, so we're still working on those. One is a diving instructor, the other one is an assistant for winter track. And then we do have seven open positions for the spring, including a recent resignation for track. I've spoken extensively with Mr. Spink, and he's working on those.
Okay, so we feel okay about them right now, not hitting the panic button yet, or Dirk?
Correct, we feel okay right now, but still obviously looking to fill those positions.
Anybody knows anybody? Take their temperature?
Please contact us, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members to my right? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Sergini.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have matters of curriculum and programs.
Thank you, Dr. Zirby. I'll draw your attention to item 13E, which is the school calendar, 2324 school calendar, which is attached for your review and consideration, which we'll seek approval for for next week. Some of the highlights for the 2324 calendar, our induction for new employees will be August 21st and 22nd. Three in-service days for our staff will be August 23rd, 24th, and 28th. The first day for all students, K to 12, will be on Tuesday, August 29th. We have set aside three common K to 12 in-service days, which will be October 9th, February 16th, and April 23rd. I just want to take note that the April 23rd day is a little different than the May election day, because it is a primary presidential year, so Pennsylvania always moves that up into the April primary day, so that's why that day will be considered an in-service day as opposed to the usual May. The last day of school tentatively for students is Wednesday, June 12th, and we're pleased to announce that on the calendar, you'll see a tentative graduation date of Tuesday, June 11th. Fingers crossed everything goes well. We've also added some in-service, early dismissal in-service days at the end of each grading period for collaboration and team planning.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Are there any questions for Dr. Walsh on the schedule, on the school calendar? on the, on the school calendar? Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have policy. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Without having a policy meeting in December, you can see the policy committee was very busy in January with the diligent work of Dr. Engstai since most of the 200 series falls under her, her guidance. There's a lot of work that was done, specifically policies 203, 204, 206, and 218.1. There were a number of additions, deletions, and changes made to specific words and phrases, and some of it was to clarify some of the definitions within those policies. The two major ones that we had revisions on was 218, specifically with off-campus activities and the authority invested in that to reflect some of the recent legal guidance the district had received to some recent court decisions that have been out in the public. Naturally, 218.2 needed some to be reflected current law with respect to threat assessment teams and the implementation of those into school districts and substituting that name for the building principal and a number of policies. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. Any questions for Mr. Regina on my left? Seeing none. How about on my right? Seeing none, we move on to other. Under gifts and donations, we approve a gift from Merck Giving Back Employees Giving Back Program to purchase new recess equipment for Arrowhead and the amount of $350,000. We also approve the backpack program donations in the amount of $725.26. Under 13B, there's a number of trips listed there. The Mathacton High School Cheerleading Team trip to Hershey on January 26th through to 28th. We also have the Mathacton High School Rochester Riverview Convention Center trip for the Eastern Division Course students, April 13th through the 16th. We approve the field trip for the, for a presentation or, or competition at Greenville, PA to participation academic decathlon for competition number four, state championship on March 2nd through the, the 4th of 2023, and approve a Mathacton High School trip to Hershey Lodge to participation in Future Business Leaders of America Students Competition, April 17th through the 19th. In terms of transportation, approve the following driver as part of the transportation employee rosters for the 2223 school year, Charles Stenger. And then under the Healthcare Consortium, item 13D, approve Mr. Timothy Bricker to serve as a management trustee for the Bucks Montgomery County Schools Health Consortium effective July 1, 23 through June 30th of 2025. And as Mr., or as Dr. Walsh mentioned, the, the school calendar. You'll see, then on 13F, we have the 23 graduation date to establish graduation from Mathacton High School, class of 2023, for June 13th, 2023, located, located at Mathacton High School campus, beginning at 4:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. And that takes us into dates for board members' calendars, and turn it back over to Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Under other, I just wanted to make a comment that for the backpack donations, that Giant in Audubon has generously opted to donate their roundup at the cash register to the Mathacton Backpack Program in January. So we thank them for that. Were there any other questions under other at all? Okay, anything for old business or new business? No? Okay. Now it's time for courtesy of the floor, where we provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments, or you can submit questions via email to information@mathacton.org.
Amy Sorrelli, Lower Providence. I'd like to read policy 109, resource materials so that we're all on the same page. Under reconsideration of materials, it states that any parent or guardian who wishes to request reconsideration of a resource material should (1) contact the professional currently using the resource and share the concern. The professional will discuss the instructional value of the said resource. (2) Further concerns should be written and sent to the building administrator. The administrator will send written communication to arrange a conference between the concerned parties. (3) If the concerns have not been sufficiently addressed during the above steps, then the parent or guardian should complete attachment 1 from policy number 109 and submit the formal reconsideration form to the director of curriculum and instruction. There is a number four and another five, but they're irrelevant at this point in time. I know of at least two situations where parents follow policy for the reconsideration of a resource, but the administration did not. You did not, you cannot pick and choose what steps you want to follow. The policies are in place for a reason. If the parents and community members have to adhere to policy, the administration should be setting the precedent, but you all seem to fall short almost every time. Rules for Nate, for the, but not for me, I guess. The administration is trying to silence parents and bury us in paperwork so the real issues are never addressed, in my opinion. I remember hearing words of transparency with this new board. Well, where is it? Because it seems like the same old ignore and forget tactics that you've always used. For the record, I don't want to ban books, but I, I find it ironic that after I mentioned and discussed One Nation Under Sex, written by Larry Flynt, the founder of Hustler Magazine with Chey Regina last fall, that it was removed and is no longer available in the high school library. As far as I know, no one filled out a form for that. I'd like to know the review process that book was subjected to because I have a full list that should go through that process as well. That's all I'm asking for. I'm asking for a formal review policy to be created so that the sexually explicit books and the books that are listed as adult interest level can be given proper and unbiased reviews. Remember that these resources with graphic adult content are available to children in the high school as young as 13. Are you willing to protect the children of this district from this explicit sexual material? Raise your hand if you are. Great. Well, for those of you watching at home, none of the board members raised their hand, and I'm not surprised. Can any of you tell me how pornography has any educational value? I'd love to know because I think it's absolutely unacceptable and downright sick. All of you are part of the problem if you're not going to be part of the solution.
Jim Malik, Warsester. Excellent. I'm going to go one step further. Raise your hands if you think having sex books in the library is wrong. Raise your hand if you think having sex books in the library are wrong. Board members. Amazing. Your audit tonight, you discussed, and the budget. Not attached to the agenda, not on the website. Why can't we see that stuff? So we can come up to the microphone and make proper comment on what you guys are doing with an out-of-control budget? It, it doesn't make sense to me. There must be national secrets in there or something. If you remember, Ucare board members, when you guys first ran for office, you put out a bunch of mailers slamming your predecessors for raising taxes every year. They did it twice. Well, guess what? You're no different. Every year, Ucare people have been sitting up there, you've raised our taxes. This year, you're proposing 4.1%. I didn't see any of those other boards doing that. I think that's pretty hypocritical on your part. What I see with your budget process is, it's, it's like a game of shells, right? You can make your surplus or your deficit, whatever you want. Case in point, $7 million from Shenondale comes in, goes to the general fund. Now, if you left it there, it would have been a $7 million surplus. But what you did is you transferred it to the capital reserve and turned it into an expenditure so it offset the revenue. Okay? So if you want to get rid of that $400,000, all you had to do was transfer half of the Shenondale money into the capital reserve fund, and you would have had a $3 million surplus. So this is how we take care of surpluses now. Accounting methods, simple accounting, moving funds to other funds. That's got to be looked into. I just looked at the Lower Marion case, finally got the courthouse documents. Very interesting. The 2122 budget, Dr. Zerby put out a mailer. First mailer was ridiculous, wrong, inaccurate. Second mailer, $127 million revenue and expenses when your budget that you passed is $114 million. Is anybody going to explain to us what the difference is? Where the $13 million is? Didn't hear any explanation about that tonight, other than to hear your new auditor saying, oh, the way we're doing things now are more in line with accounting principles. That's why we need to see that info. Thank you.
Hi, Sandy Hamilton. I'm a resident of Lower Providence for 20-some years. I have three students. Two students went through Mathacton and one currently in middle school. I, I honestly don't know why this would even be a topic that I would even ever, ever have to discuss, but why is there pornography and sex in the library books? I don't under, I don't understand why. I don't know why anyone thinks they're helping someone. That's, to me, that is hurting someone. It's very confusing to kids. I, I don't understand the, the process. Who's recommending these books to the school? I don't know how this gets past the curriculum or the librarian. I guess some books get past it, but I don't know why. I, I don't even want to say what's in the books. I, I can't even get myself to say it. For the people listening, and, and there's bestiality, there's anal sex, there's oral sex. I don't understand why this is, this is an issue. Any form of sex, whether heterosexual sex, homosexual sex, does not belong in, in a, in a, in a library book. It just doesn't belong. And people don't know, parents don't know this is going on. So please, there has to be something done to change this process. Parents need a way to, to find out, not just, oh, if your kid doesn't want to read the book, then, then you don't have to read the book. It's already too late when they read the book. It's already in their head. I thought maybe someone could elaborate on this, that there's a, a process not to rate the books, but to have, you know, sexually explicit material in the book. And then if the student wants to read it, they check it out. It has sexually explicit material. The parent gets an email, parent, you know, online through the, the emergency contact, gets an, you know, the list, what name of the book, what's the content in the book. The parent gets yes or no, then the kid could get the book next week or the week after. I don't know how to change this process, but something has to change. Thank you.
Catherine Ruldermuth, Eagleville. First of all, I want to express my appreciation to each of you here tonight for your service on behalf of the children of our community. I know that you spend many more hours each month than those few here tonight. So again, I thank you. But as we have come tonight to express our concerns, we want you to know that you are not the enemy. And hopefully, you will extend that same courtesy to us. There's a lot being said today about the mental health of our young people. Teen suicide, among other issues, is a major concern. That's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. It behooves us as parents, grandparents, school board members, the whole community, to make sure that we are not contributing to this problem. To allow our schools to be an avenue of exposure to sexual information that is beyond their maturity level is not only unnecessary, but it could even be considered criminal. Research has confirmed that, quote, pornography is any writings, pictures, et cetera, that arouses sexual desire. Therefore, giving access to this information to minors is considered, this is a direct quote, sexual exploitation of minors.
Yep.
Who, incidentally, is anyone under 18 years of age. Also, it has been determined by the courts that, quote, child pornography is not protected by the First Amendment Clause of the Constitution. Don't give me this stuff about free speech when it comes to pornography with children. This information was obtained from the Freedom Forum Institute's First Amendment Center. You can look it up. You may want to consider whether you are opening the school district to legal action if you continue to allow this exposure to anyone under 18 years of age. Thank you.
Peter Schlenker, Lower Providence. I am the, the parent of four graduates of Mathacton School District and the grandparent of a future Mathacton School District student. I just want to read from the Pennsylvania State Legislature's website, Title 18, Section 5903, Part C. Give me a moment while I page down to it. Dissemination to minors. Oh, first off, the title of it is, I did read that part, nevermind. Dissemination to minors. No person shall knowingly disseminate by sale, loan, or otherwise, or otherwise explicit sexual materials to a minor. Explicit sexual materials, as used in this subsection, means materials which are obscene, or, number one, any picture, photograph, drawing, sculpture, motion picture, film, videotape, or similar visual presence, presentation, or image of a person, or a portion, portion of the human body which depicts nudity, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse, and which is harmful to minors. Or, two, any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced, or sound recording which contains any matter enumerated in paragraph one, or explicit and detailed verbal descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse, which taken as a whole is harmful to minors. From what I understand about the book that's been in question, I have not read the book myself. I never intend to read the book myself, but I've had portions distributed to me of this book. One book in particular falls into that category of the dissemination to minors, Part Two. Thank you.
Before you start the timer, I've got a request for a, you started the timer, Dave. I didn't even finish the sentence. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Request for a, an accommodation. I recently suffered a brain injury in a car accident. My ability to speak and read off a page due to visual clutter and bright lights is affected. While five minutes up from three is likely appropriate, I ask Liz that four minutes, this is within your purview by the charter, as a reasonable accommodation, in lieu of three.
Any change for time allocation needs a board vote.
I believe that's within your purview, Liz. We can ask the solicitor? No. Would it help if I wore an oversized hooded sweatshirt? Fair enough. Good night, everybody. You know, I haven't been here in a while. I'm sorry, I have to.
Please, please state your name and your.
Of course. Vince Josephs, Warsester, Pennsylvania, Montgomery County, Mathacton School District. You know, I, I was hoping I wouldn't have to come back anytime soon, but here we are. I'd like to start by saying, well, I'm not surprised of the people I did not vote for. I'm very disappointed in the people I did vote for, who refused to take a stand against smut, real smut, not Lady Liberty's bell breast, smut being peddled to children. Can't even raise your hand. Two new faces in the, on the board here. I want to thank you for continuing our tradition of unelected. I want to thank you for continuing our tradition of unelected officials making important decisions that affect us. I saw you got a new logo. My eyes are shot, but it looked like a big bald head full of hot air and self-preservation lifting our school off of the foundation on which it was built and into the ideological ether at the expense of our children. Your slogan on the rise, as if it weren't evident, you actually created a slogan that demonstrates your priority is increasing the school rating to propel your own interests and not student success in reading, writing, math, science, and artists. Hey, how's patient care at that hospital? I don't know, but they're getting their health rating up from a C to a B is a conversation you'll never hear. But on the rise is not all propaganda, so here's a list of items that are arguably arguably on the rise at Methacton High School. Mediocrity, declining test scores, the immediate consequences of uselessly masking healthy children, the lingering consequences of uselessly masking healthy children. Denial, the resentment of parents' opinions, self-preservation, equity at the expense of equality, school sanctioned racism, the Methacton Foundation. Wait, under Methacton Foundation, I have vendor contributions, vendor contract retention, pay-to-play schemes, corruption and racketeering, and David Zerby's heart rate at the moment. Pornography peddled to minors, grooming, criminal conduct, plausible deniability, mortal depravity, ideological evil, indoctrination, gaslighting, myocarditis, Pfizer profits, the overwhelming opinion of teachers that their voices are not being heard, decisions made by administration that directly affect teachers, inflation related to the purchasing power, the rate of inflation proportional to teacher salaries. So here's a recommendation for a more accurate logo. Not a balloon, but a blimp, spewing the flames of moral depravity, failure, and sick pedagogy anathema to our founding principles, dragging down the school and our children. Looking at you, Dave. And at the bottom, a little Superintendent Dave Zerby, and he's pointing at the carnage with a little cartoon speech bubble that simply says, "I did that." You're all disgusting, by the way.
Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. The Planetarium Abomination. Last year, Dr. Zerby presented an expensive and total redo of the McMalin Planetarium, intended for K-8 education here. In 2013, the Great Lakes Planetarium Association presented recommendations in nine chapters for all aspects of planetarium design, build, operation, et cetera, all still available and useful to aid in design and choices among vendors. I also suggested, as an alternative, use of virtual reality goggles as an educational tool with large cost savings and a modern replacement for a planetarium. Mr. Chantry spoke of the decline of planetariums in PA schools without saying why. The Colonial District closed theirs as a money-saving move about 10, 20 years ago. The redo procurement also includes appearances of sole sourcing redo to Spitz, now just a local dome builder. Presumably, advertising of bids included two local newspapers, while Spitz is the only vendor located nearby. If the local ads were for fields returfing, as coming up soon, they would be unanswered, but we would seek multiple bids elsewhere, wouldn't we? In December, I brought forth to directors money-saving facts about the planetarium redo, potentially saving $500,000. Silence from the directors ensued. I guess I should have asked them to raise their hands. There seems apparent ignorance or avoidance of competition that leads to considerable waste of money. It is not too late to fix that. $700,000 of federal money is involved. Mr. Bricker recently spoke of extra bidding hoops to go through when federal money is used. Are we compliant? This evening, you had a series of pertinent speeches from this podium at Courtesy of the Floor. And it makes... In my mind, it's difficult to say that anything said from this podium over the course of years is implemented. It's as if directors are told, "The public is our enemy, ignore them." This evening, several speakers asked people to raise their hands at the board table.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Andrews.
And I think there were no hands raised. Thank you.
Anybody else for Courtesy of the Floor tonight? Seeing none. Any comments from board members?
Yeah, I'd like to start if I could. I just want to say a few things about some of the comments that were made with regards to the library books, if I could. So library books, by nature, are resources that are not used as part of our curriculum. So those aren't things that are subjected to students directly by teachers to students, but are made available to students and staff that provide a well-balanced and well-rounded coverage of subject types and variety, and that are to present all points of view concerning the problems and issues of our time internationally, nationally, and locally. And this wording is right out of our policy, so this isn't stuff that I'm making up. So I've received, as well as other administrators and librarians, have received emails from a handful of individuals who provide claim of concern over passages contained within certain books located in some of our libraries. My review of those emails have resulted in an update to our administrative regulations, our guidelines for how to go about selecting books, as well as my response to the senders that as part of our policy on resource materials, that they should complete and request, a request for reconsideration, and send that request to the Director of Curriculum. Unfortunately, to date, we're, given the concerns that we've heard from members of the public here at the podium and in other instances, as well as that information that we've heard from emails, I've received no request for consideration up to date. And really, what I'm saying is, this policy, as it pertains to library resources or other supplemental resources, is designed to not allow one person, either the superintendent or anyone else on this board, to dictate what those resources are exactly. So the process is designed to allow for our community to, and our parents, to give feedback, and to allow that process to unfold, to let the educational professionals give feedback to the superintendent, to the board for reconsideration if, in fact, a request is made. So, while we can dialogue about this all we want, and we can hear all the concerns, and I hear them, and we're hearing them, but we haven't received a formal request. And while a member of the public stood up here and said that we're bypassing the steps of the process, I recognize what that individual is saying, and the request from...
Oral sex is popping another dude's peen in your mouth. Indeed, popping doors and heads. You all okay with that?
You are not to disrupt this meeting, sir. We are... We are here to conduct the business of the Board. You are disrupting this meeting.
You have daughters. You have daughters.
Lie, you have your shot.
Sir. You are disrupting this meeting. We are here to conduct the business of the Board.
Fill out a form. I will make sure you go to jail for giving smut to children. They will pass you around with currency. No society has ever tolerated, ever, child sexual exploitation.
Get him out.
Oh.
Get him out. Get him out.
I will die on this hill.
Pedophile.
Thank you. What's that?
Pedophile.
You're pedophiles.
Join the meeting.
Anybody else who speaks?
Motion to adjourn. So adjourn.